All right, good morning again and welcome. Hopefully you're all here to watch The Chosen and to discuss that. If not, you're in the wrong place. So this is our third episode that we're looking at in the first season. As we've discussed before, their plan is to have seven seasons, they're now working on the third. So the first two seasons have been released, each of those seasons has eight episodes. It's based on the Gospels, but it gives, it flushes it out with a kind of a historical fiction to the Gospels. We're going to see that particularly in today's episode. Today's episode is not something that you're going to find as a gospel story per se. It takes the, what we understand from what the Gospels tell us about the Lord's relationship with children, and helps that to become very real or concrete for us. So we have met some people that we know from the Gospels themselves. Today, we're going to be people that are not named in the Gospel. So, excuse me, sometimes we think, well, where is this in the Gospel? It's not there. You know, they take the story of Matthew and of course they flesh that out. And I, the last two days, I've been wanting to say at Mass, but I didn't, is that, because yesterday it made the comment that during the Hesemonian Empire, that they, the Greeks insisted that everybody would become Greek in their culture and their society. They established a gymnasium in Jerusalem, they covered the sign of their circumcision, and they put the abomination in the temple. Last week, if you remember, let's give it such small detail, they're very careful about the details of the way that they present this. At one point, when it's the Sabbath meal, the Shabbat dinner, and Nicodemus is with his wife, and he's admiring the tapestry, do you remember what he said at that point? She, she comes up to him and she says, "What are you looking at?" And he said, "It's beautiful, it's very interesting, it's Hesemonian." So it's from the time of the first reading that we're doing in the lecture hour. And he talks about how the Greeks took over, the Jewish faith was suppressed, and they were not allowed to publicly practice their religion, which is part of what we heard today with Eleazar. They now put up all these idols and they begin to demand that they worship the idols, and of course they want Eleazar, just go along. You know, don't eat the food, but just go along, protect. And I can't pretend I'm going to leave people astray. So that actually, it's a detail that they gave us last week in the, in, in the episode, as he's admiring the tapestry. So they're throwing in all these little bits of history and of scriptural tradition that, to be able to connect it. So they're trying to be very authentic. And what they're saying, of course, even in his time, it would be an antique, today, of course, it would be in a museum, because it's almost 3,000 years, well, it's 2,500 years old. I mean, that's just a little detail to, from last week, that's happens to get caught in, in, in the scripture, in the way the lecture hour falls as well. So what we did discover, for those, some of you I knew, so welcome, we're glad to have you with us. People have said that they wish people in this, in the series had name tags, so they know who was who. So what we do is we begin by, I'll remind you the characters that we've seen. So of course, the first one that we meet is Quintus, he's the man who loves to be bad, he's the Roman centurion. He's in charge of, of the outpost up at Capernaum. So all of this takes place around Galilee, and he's the procurator up in the, in the area of Galilee. And he's a vicious man, as you can tell, just by looking at it, he's nasty. And then the, one of the first ones that we meet is Matthew, Levi, the tax collector. And this is him, we, last week, we saw the thing about Shabbat dinner, and here's Levi having his dinner with his family. That's John, that's the only people that were, were taken, of course, he is the, he's undesirable, because he's betrayed his people. He's collecting taxes from the Romans, for the Romans, collecting them from the Jews. So he's considered to be a betrayer of his people, because he's, because he's, he's getting, he's getting very wealthy, as we saw. And, and of course, that gives us another insight, as I mentioned today, into Zacchaeus. Why Zacchaeus was so notorious, why they had this little chance just to embarrass him and make him look ridiculous, they took him. And of course, Zacchaeus didn't care, he just wanted to see the Lord, and so he climbs the sycamore tree. So, the, let me show this one, what, we see these two. So, this, this is Nicodemus and Mary of Magdala. We meet Mary in the first episode, she has, she is possessed by many demons. Nicodemus is from the Sanhedrin, who has come to Capernaum to visit there, and to kind of make an official visit, to check, make sure everybody's following the law, and gets taken by the Roman soldiers into the Red Quarter, where he meets up with Mary, and says that only God can expel the demons from her. And then they discover, we discover in the second episode, that she has been exorcised. He thinks he did it, and then he learns that he didn't. So we'll find out, when he finds out the truth of that, in the upcoming episodes. The other two on the back of this are the brothers, Simon and Andrew, they're the fishermen. So they're very much brothers, they're not necessarily honest people either, particularly Simon. Simon's a, an entrepreneur, we would say, he's always looking for an angle to make more money and to cheat the Romans, even if that means he doesn't follow the law of his faith. So, we'll see a lot more about that. So, and here's Simon again. So here's a picture of Simon, who of course, we know as the Apostle Peter. He obviously has an important part to play in the Gospels and in the life of the church, and therefore in this, in this series. So this is Simon, so that we can know who he is. And after we meet all of them, what's that? And then after Simon, we meet, the last character we meet in the first episode is actually the Lord Jesus. And so this is what the Lord looks like in the series. So when you see him, there's no halo around his head, in the series. So, and there's not this sense of awe necessarily, there's a real respect for him that you will see by the people that surround him. But when you first meet him, he's just another Jew in the story, which is probably how people saw him, just another Jew, who knew a lot, and who taught them a lot, as a result of that. Right? So that's the Lord Jesus, and then of course, we have, this was the closing image, oops, of the first series, the first episode, I'm sorry, which is Mary and the Lord, that he has reminded her that she is his, you are mine. That's what she learned as a very young child, and she lost sight of. And of course, that's the image, that's simply for Mary of Magdala, or even for the people of Israel, who are also the chosen people, but for each of us, who have been chosen by God. So this is kind of the iconic image that they're putting forward. And then, today's episode, we're going to meet the children. Okay, so, they're, they're a band of children that the Lord befriends, and so we're going to see how he befriends them and invites them in, and really becomes a teacher to them, in a wonderful way. Any questions? Put these up so that you can, these are, these are actually images from today's episode. And without further ado, any questions at home? Mary Beth? No? All right. So we're going to let you go and watch the video, while we watch it here, and then we'll come back about 11 o'clock. The actual title of this episode is called, "Jesus Loves the Little Children." Okay, and, but it's, in the study guide that I have, it's that you are precious. So the idea about it is, so remember, we've, like, you are, we're, we're looking at how are we the chosen? How are the Israel, the people of Israel, the chosen people? So the first is that God has called them, you are mine. The second episode is that God has particularly given to them the day of rest. Last week, we talked about the Sabbath, and about the need to rest, and how that's, how God rested after creation, and how we are called to rest. We talked about how that's one of the deficiencies of our modern culture, we need to unplug and disconnect, and we don't. We don't rest in the way that we were created to be. And then this is about that we are precious, that God, and he calls us in turn to be like little children. That's the wonderful thing, you know, you think about it, it's just a few lines. Jesus says in the Gospel, "Unless you become like little children, you shall not enter into the kingdom of heaven." And what they really took that line and showed us, what can that mean, in what we see in the episode? But at the same time, it also gives us a lot of insight into the history and the culture and the experience of the first century. And what it must have been like to live there, as somebody said, you know, would you want, would you want, what would it must have been like to live in that time? And my answer was, I wouldn't make it, because if I don't have a match, I can't do this. It just wouldn't work, I, I'd have to eat everything raw. But it, it was, it was a wonderful way to be able, without being teaching, but just by giving us the visuals, you understand through the children's eyes, the things that were very commonplace. The children have hundreds of questions, that's what's so particular about children. They have all those questions, and their questions really become a wonderful opportunity for the character of Jesus to be able to give us insight to him. And how he, how the writers really capture the essence of our Lord, because he answers in riddles. You know, he's got all these tools. "Are you a carpenter?" "Well, yes, sometimes I build things, but I have a bigger job, I'm a craftsman." "Are you building something?" "Yes, I am." And of course, the image is, he's building the kingdom of God. You know, "Does your father have a house?" "Yes, he does." "Is it a big house?" "Well, we'll talk about that later." So he answers with riddles, and when you know the Gospel, you understand what he's saying. But the, those, the eyes of the children are those wonderful things. And so you see him as he, as he prepares the fire, as he cooks his meal, as he prepares everything to rest at night. How he, how all of those things are particular, and then, you know, and even then, at, at the, the very last thing he does, is to say his prayers. You know, he gets into bed, closes his eyes, and he blesses, "Blessed are you, Lord our God, who gives me sleep, that I may rest." You know, wakes up in the morning, "Blessed are you, Lord our God, who has given me the gift of this day and the sun." And that's very, very Jewish. Everything has a blessing, from the opening of their eyes, the beginning of the day, to the time that they, they have a meal, he sits down to eat. You know, "Blessed are you, Lord God, who has given us bread to eat," you know, "but if there are any children happen by, let them know that they are welcome, and they don't need to, to be afraid." So he, he knows and he sees, but it's all part of his prayer. And we, again, I think that's one of those aspects that, as Catholics, we carry over into our Catholic life, from the Jewish experience. I mean, how many of us were taught to say, and I hear it so often in confession, "I miss my morning and night prayers." Yeah, well, I hear that from people my age and older, I don't hear it from anybody younger than me. The young people don't talk about morning and night prayers. Parents don't teach that. They don't teach them to do that as part of their piety and their, their experience, and yet that's the way the Lord prayed. He began and ended every day with prayer, and anything of substance in the day had prayer. So that, you know, when he sat down to eat, he would give a prayer of blessing, for the gifts that were given. You know, it, it's, it's a challenge to find families that will say grace before meals. And of course, I was, you know, when you sit at the table, and you're a priest, everybody kind of looks at you like, "If he eats, can I eat?" "Are you going to say grace?" And I'm in the same way, like, I always say grace, and sometimes they'll say, "You didn't say grace, I said, I said it quietly. I didn't want to embarrass you, but, you know, but I said my own prayer, you know, along the way." So, some of those things that, that happen in, in the bit that it's going on. Let me see my, what might be the notes are here. And then of course, the interesting thing, which we don't think of, which was part of the first century, was the last thing, what's the last thing he did before he got into, into bed? Well, that's cultural.
Yeah.
That's cultural, that was one of the things, see, we think about, you, you brush your teeth, and you wash your face and hands, and you do, for them, that was part of their daily ritual. They would wash their feet, there's another episode in the next series, in series two, when he's outside of Samaria, and they, and, and Mary comes, his mother comes, and they're all excited, and they're all around in the tent, and he comes in and he's exhausted. And he's just, "I just want to be alone, leave me alone." And she comes over, and she washes her feet. So that's, so, in their building, and in a subtle way, they're building for us, what was common to them, is not common to us. And that that's, the way we would wash our hands or brush our teeth to go to bed, they would wash their feet. Why? Because that's the dirtiest part of their body. They don't, they don't have shoes and socks on, they have sandals, if they even have those. Nobody wore shoes except the very, very wealthy. If they had anything, they had sandals. And so I can appreciate that, because when, having been in, in Haiti, of course, there are a few streets, in the city, the streets are paved. But even with that, Judy's been to Haiti, nobody else that's here has been to Haiti. But even then, you realize it's, yeah, the pavement, but it's still filthy. They, they've got open sewers, and there's all kinds of dust and grime, and, I mean, you get home and you can feel the dirt all over your body. And you think if, if you had, you know, open shoes or sandals, your feet are filthy. And so that was part of the way they would refresh themselves. And you also have to think as, as, who's Mary was telling us, where did Mary go? No, Mary. No, she's right here in the corner, right here. Sorry. She's talking about, yeah, how you walk everywhere. And so that's the other thing, it's not just that their feet are dirty, but we have to realize, we get in the car and travel everywhere. We take an elevator or an escalator, wherever they went, they walked. You notice, we haven't seen anybody or an animal yet. You know, even when the Lord, when Jesus packs everything up, and he's heading to another campsite, he's dragging it behind him. So, so that part of the other thing is, their feet were not only dirty, they were tired. That if you've stood on your feet all day, working, in any circumstance, you know that your feet are tired. So it's soothing, and it's refreshing, so that's the last thing that they did. And then of course, in the morning, he was done, when they were all there, you know, he opens his eyes and you see what he sees. All these little faces smiling down at him, and he says, "You couldn't wait half an hour?" What parent hasn't said that to their kid? It's Saturday. But then they go down to the stream, and he's brushing his teeth. You see that, how he's, he doesn't have a Martian toothpaste? So it's just, it's just another instance of that first century life experience. And then of course, the other thing is, wonderful part of what this is, we don't, because of the way we see it in the scriptures or hear it, you don't imagine him having a sense of humor. He at times is sarcastic, as an adult can be sometimes, not being condescending, but with his own perspective, saying things. He's, he answers with riddles, but he also has his own sense of humor. And it's wonderful to hear their laughter and their delight, in all of that, in, in the ways that he answers. And so some, and so what, what they're also doing is, they're teasing us into the rest of the series. And that's not just simply this series, they're teasing us into who, who the Lord is, and what he's come to do, and how it is in some way that we are precious. And again, we have to realize that to the Lord, he, his, his vision, as we hear in the things that are said, it's not just the disciple sitting in front of him. Yet the Lord looks out across history and sees all of us as well. That's the vision of God. That's the fact that the chosen is not just the people of Israel, the twelve that will be apostles, or those that are characters in the story. It's also you and I, we are chosen. We are part of that, we're called to see this, that we have, that we belong to the Lord, and that we are precious, that we are called to be like children. You know, and it, and it's wonderful the way they present that, because the children all have questions, and every question, like a true child, leads to another question. You know, "Well, are you a carpenter? Well, what are you building?" And, you know, "What, what kind of, what, what else do you do? What's your question? What do you mean? What's your job? Why are you here? How long are you going to be here?" It's like, you know, "Give me a rest." You know, and then, "Well, do you have friends?" "Yes, I do, but I have others that don't know yet that they're going to be my friends." "Well, what if they don't like you?" Some won't. Like, he's clear, he knows, he, the Lord is very confident in who he is, what he has and what he doesn't. But they do that in a way that is lighthearted, and even he's humorous, but is also very authentic. We get that sense of how good the Lord is. So the, 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 because this, this is what I'm doing over there, I'm taking notes. "Do you have friends?" "I have some, but I will have more." "Does your father have a house?" "That's a question for another time." And then of course, he, he breaks bread, and he says, "I love food, I love all food, but I especially love bread." So of course, that's another indicator of the Lord, and what we're going to see in his, in his ministry and his life experience. And then he invites them to pray the Shema. All right, we heard that just a couple of weeks ago on our Sunday lecture hour. Okay, "Here are Israel, the Lord our God is one, the Lord alone." And it, it was quite telling to watch as, as the children say, he starts it for them, and then they all take over. And they, excuse me, they all say it in unison, just the, and he is very moved by that, almost tearful at the end. Right, because you have to realize that that, to a Jewish person, is probably the equivalent of the Lord's prayer. Which is why then they, they, they balance it with him teaching them the Lord's prayer. But to the Jewish person, that was their identity, because they were the people to whom it was revealed that God is one. And so they're talking about him, they don't know that, that the, the Lord your God is one, this is the Son of God incarnate. And this is the great revelation that God has given to the Jewish people. And so this is, if you've ever seen, like, the, the name of it escapes me. If you've ever been to a Jewish household, then you know that right next to the, to the door jamb, there's, there's a little box, and in the box is a piece of, of papyrus or paper, and it has the Shema written on it. And the tradition is that as you enter or leave the house, you touch it. And the Jewish understanding is, it's a great blessing to be able to say the Shema as you are dying, that the last thing you say in this world is the Shema. "Here are Israel, the Lord our God is one, the Lord alone." And so, for, to the Jew, that's the Jewish influence in this, that you get a truly authentic sense of, of the first century, and you see how the Lord is moved by that. But, and again, how the children have understood that and lived that faithfully.
That prayer's not in the Bible?
It's not listed as a prayer, but yeah, it comes out of the Bible.
Okay, but it's not listed, the wording?
"Here are Israel, the Lord our God, the Lord alone."
The children were saying?
Yeah, absolutely, it comes from the scriptures. It's in Numbers and Deuteronomy.
Thank you.
It's also in the Gospels, when they ask the Lord, "What is the, what's the great commandment? Here are Israel, the Lord our God is one, you shall love the Lord with all your heart, with all your soul, with all your mind, and with all your way." So, and then, and then there are, again, he, like a great teacher, he's teaching, he's teaching to the children, but the writers are really having him teach us. So they say to him, you know, "Why are you here? How long are you here?" And then, they, they, obviously, the children, they don't have the polite filter that we do. They ask the questions, "Well, why don't you have a home? Why are you living here in the, in the field? Why don't you have a home?" "I do, I, I, because I have a larger job, and I need to move." And, "What's your job?" Well, everybody has a job that is larger than their trade. We all have something in life that is more than simply what we get paid to do, if you want to understand that.
There's a message there.
Well, it's, it's, it's a great truth about it.
Yeah, I know, for all of us, we should remember. It's not just what we do as a job and get paid for, we have a bigger job.
And what does Jesus say to them is the bigger job? To love one another, and most importantly, always to love God. He says, "That's the job everyone has, to love each other and to love God." And if we all did that job, how different would it be? But, but we live in a country at a time where people don't want to love each other, they want to hate each other. We want to demonize everybody. We want to divide, who's like us and who's different, and therefore, I'm more right than you're, you know, it's, it's horrible what we've done. So everybody has a job that is larger than their trade, and that the most important of that job is to be able to love God. And then of course, their questions are, they're beginning to start to, they're, they're not stupid, even though they're children, they're beginning to put it together. And so, as they're running through the field, they're having the questions, you know, "Well, who do you think he is? Well, I don't think he's going to hurt us, I think he's a good man." "Well, what if he's really, you know, what if he's helping us to, to make weapons, and we don't even know it?" You know, I mean, so it's, they all have the doubts that we would have. And then they question, you know, whether he's the prophet, a new prophet. Excuse me, and of course, the boys who go to the Torah school, who are taught by the rabbi, they have their own insight, that of course, the expectation is, the Messiah is a military leader. He's going to come, and he's going to establish an army, and then overthrow the Romans, and he's going to be able to be, to do all this. And of course, that's not what he's teaching them at all. He's teaching them gentleness and kindness, and to be able to, and that, it's, it's coming into conflict with what they're understanding, what they're being taught about the Bible. Which is, and so in, in the middle of that, there's a wonderful image where he's, the children are helping him, and he's teaching them to sing. Which is, was, it's also a very Jewish part of their life, they, they sing a lot of their prayers, the Psalms, were originally songs. But what we know as the Psalms is a songbook to the Jewish people. We don't know the melodies. And when you translate it into English, it doesn't have the same rhythm. But you don't think of our Lord singing, and yet he did. That would have been most authentic in his prayer, and of course, he's teaching them to sing. And, do you remember what he was singing?
I don't remember him singing.
Oh, you don't remember him singing?
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they, it was one of those things where they, they were piling stuff, they, they had made some different things. They were putting everything onto the sled that he drags behind him, and he was singing to them, how good it is to see them live together in love.
Why isn't it that she, the little girl, could read?
Apparently, well, that's the, that's the interesting thing, because women weren't allowed to read. But of course, you, we find out in another point, in, in the next, in the second, in, the second year of the series, we find out that some of the women in his group can read, and they're teaching others. So it, it's not that women couldn't read, it was not a common practice. And obviously, whatever she is, is communicating to, to Jesus, he understands that she's, she's a smart little girl, because even though she's a girl, she's, she's not hesitant, she's confident, but she also has, she's also a, 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 a child of virtue. And that's, it's a simple thing, you know, but it, it's a big thing. You know, as we realize, she, she doesn't come from a wealthy family. She has a very crude doll that her mother made, they can't afford toys, they have a, a, a struggling with their money, that's part of what's going back and forth. You know, and when she's at the, the dinner table, and her mother wants her husband to go to Joanna's house, and like any husband, he's like, "Yeah, yeah, yeah, what, where am I supposed to go now, what, what?" And, and then she says, "Oh, yeah, yeah, Joanne, Joanna, is that one? Yeah, 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 Joanna." "No, well, I have to work too." Why does he have to work late? Obviously, because he needs the money, and they're a poor family. And yet, when she got there, and she checked everything out, she looked at everything, but she never touched anything to take it. And then, and he commented, he commended her for that, "Thank you for not taking any food yesterday." And then he shares his food, not that she couldn't have it, but it wasn't hers to just take, it needed to be given. So that tells you, she's also a child of virtue. So that tells you she's also a child of virtue. And in all those levels, what the writers are revealing to us in the example of, of our Lord is how we are to be children of God. We are to be children of virtue, that God loves our questions. He doesn't, he never says to them enough of your questions. They can ask all the questions they want and he'll answer them, but they don't get the answers they're looking for. You know, God answers, even today, trust me, God answers with riddles. Ask, if you don't think so, pray. And it was saying, you know, people say, I, I, I don't get an answer. Yeah, you got an answer, it's a riddle. You know, God doesn't tell us because then there isn't faith, if we know it's not faith. So he calls us to be able to believe. And believing then to be able to do that. And then they talk about how, eh, eh, what he's teaching them is different. And so he reminds them that they are to be special, they are to be gentle. And then the boys say, but that's not what the rabbi is teaching us. The Romans are harsh and we need to answer with harshness. We need to be cruel like they are cruel and physical and violent. This is, oh, you know, respect your teachers, honor your parents, but remember, smart men often lack wisdom. Truer words were never spoken. Smart men often lack wisdom. And, and is there, and he asks them the question, is there anything in scripture that says the Messiah must be a great military man? And there isn't. That's their understanding and their expectation because that's what they felt they needed and wanted. And that's what he says, we have to realize that some of the things that we have learned are wrong. And then he asks the question, who loves justice? Of course, the Lord loves justice. And then he talks about how, but the Lord says vengeance is mine, says the Lord. And then, of course, then he asks the question and Abigail raises her hand, which must be how he realizes that she can read because somebody's teaching her the Torah, probably her mother. Because she knows scriptures. She can only know the questions that, the answers to the questions he's asking if she's reading the Torah. Of course, they're not going to admit to that because that was considered, uh, uh, inappropriate at that time. So, and of course, the Lord loves justice. And so, um, and then the, the Lord gives you, gives us the wonderful reminder of the story in scripture of David and Saul. Of course, we know David was God's anointed when Jeho, when Samuel is called, um, not to Bellingham, but to Bethlehem. To find Jesse's sons. And it picks David to be the king and anoints David in the spirit of the Lord rushes upon him, but Saul is still the rightful king. And so there's a point where, uh, David creeps into the, to the camp at night, gets beyond his guards and Saul is sleeping and he has the opportunity to kill him. And his, his fellow soldiers are encouraging him, because you're chance, you're the king. God has anointed you, kill him. No, 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 he is still the Lord's anointed and this is not the right time. And so it's also a reminder that God's time is different from our time. And that we are, uh, to be able to trust in God, um, that, um, for God's justice, maybe we let God provide the justice and not try to be the strongest all the time. The powerful line and not try to be the strongest all the time. And then, of course, he had gone away, you saw that, there was a, a point where he packed up everything and he left and then he came back and the children were there, uh, labor and they wanted to know where he went. And of course, he told them he had gone because there was a woman who was a friend, there was a woman that needed him because she had, uh, a lot of pain in her life. And of course, we all know that that woman is Mary. So we know that the story is the bookend to the very first episode. Some of this takes place before we actually meet them in the first episode. He's there at the camp, meeting Abigail and Jonathan and the other children. And in the middle of that, he leaves to go into Capernaum and there he meets up with Mary and, and is able to exorcise her of the demons. And then, of course, he comes back and meets up with them. And then he picks up and leaves because now we're going to see that they're going somewhere else. Right, so of course, so where's he going? He's going to, to, to Cana. To the wedding in Cana. Okay, that's the first bit. And so just in case with all of that, we missed it. At the very end, the questions come back to, what is your reason for being here? Why are you here? Why are you doing this? Why are you a carpenter? What are you building? Why don't you have a house? What is your reason for being here? And so he says, I'm, I'm, I'm teaching you because adults need the faith of children. Unless you become like little children, you cannot enter the kingdom of heaven. And so it's a reminder to us, all of what we see that is innocent, that is vulnerable, that is curious, that is at the same time genuine and authentic and, and loving, you know, and, and it's the great image. Abigail really is the first, um, apostle because, well, the Lord doesn't send her, but she brings people. She finds him in the, in the, in the field and the next day she brings Jonathan. You know, and she's already planning that, you know, well, eh, because we want to go, I'll go right after my chores. Well, where are you going? Well, we'll just go out to the field, don't go to the river, don't go swimming, you know. And then, then, of course, when she and Jonathan go, then, of course, they bring the rest of their friends. And so you got Joshua, sorry, Joshua. Jonathan's all right. He's not in the series, is he? He's behind, that's right, he's the man behind the camera. So, but again, part of, just to, to pull it all back together is to understand that what we're, what we're hearing in this particular episode, it's not necessarily anything that is an event in the Gospels themselves, but it's giving us that feel to what the life of our Lord was like in the first century and how he had this wonderful relationship with children, but in turn, how the children had this genuine relationship with him and it's really the model. This is how we are to be with God, that we would be his children and, and be his disciples. Any questions? I don't have anything else to offer. The mezuzah, thank you, yes, that's correct. That's the word I couldn't find. No, 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 the mezuzah is what the Jewish people, even today, Jewish people will put on the, on the door jamb. It's called a mezuzah. And inside the mezuzah is a piece of paper or papyrus that has the Shema. Right, he did tell you what it was because they asked him, what are you making? And it was, it was a key in Omaha. So, so remember that in the first century, we think of carpenter, that he was Joseph, that he was the son of Joseph the carpenter. So we think that he worked with wood, which obviously he did. But he didn't just make chairs and tables and, and firm, and toys for children. He also made very useful things, he would repair gates. Remember, a lot of stuff, I mean, even if you go to the Holy Land today, a lot of things are done with, um, stone and cement. But doors and windows and gates, uh, all are wooden. And so he's making a lock that would have a wooden gate. So to be able to, 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 maybe for a house or probably a workshop, so that people could be able to be prevented from getting in. And the other thing is that, while we tend to, to, to refer to it as, as carpenter, first century carpenters worked as much with stone as they did with wood. So, because they would have, they would have been masons as well as carpenters. But, um, it's come down through the translation as carpenter. But he would have done with masonry as well, cement, stone, those types of things. Carolyn?
What were those structures that were in the cart he was dragging that moved like cages?
Yeah, so, and I, I, I was trying to figure, because I didn't have my glasses on, so I'm sorry. Um, I think a couple of things, one of them, I, one of the things that I think was, it seemed to me that there was fire inside of them. So I think they were some type of, of a lamp to prevent things from falling into the fire. Or they may have been cages actually for animals, have to realize, they would have birds and chickens and other things. So maybe to bring things back and forth from the market, that he was making wooden cages for them. I'm not sure. It seemed that there were also tall cages, but I think what those were at, at the campsite were actually his, um, the, the stanchions for his tent. So I think at night he would put the, this is, um, he would, he would take those two pieces because they were, they were triangular. And I, I think that was part of the framing for his. But I, I, I'll have to go back and look because I, I didn't have my glasses. So I, I'll have that answer for you next week. Who had it? Dolly?
There was one episode, and I don't know which one it was, where he shows him mending or fixing a person's cart. And the guy says to him, you know, you did such a great job, you have a living.
That's actually in the second, second season. That's when he gets to, um, Samaria. Okay, when the women at the wall brings him into Samaria, but that's in the second season. And they're fixing that, that's all part of the, the whole thing, um, with the, the, I, I want to get ahead of it. But that's in the second season, yes. Yeah, and that's part of the, the double entendre, the tongue-in-cheat type of stuff that happens in the series. Mary, Septa, did you have a question or a comment? I haven't seen anything about it, I know that she was someone, uh, anything about season three. I know that this coming weekend, Sunday night, they have another livestream. So I'm guessing that that's probably when he's going to announce it.
You mentioned earlier that not until March.
Yeah, okay. Well, they're, they're up to, they're up to episode eight as far as funding. Eight, eight of eight, uh, of eight of season three. But they're on the eighth episode as far as funding.
Father, did you see how they're building the whole set permanently? So this is what's holding them back.
Oh, no, I didn't see that.
They are building the whole set permanently, a huge, huge, dumb type of town.
Yeah.
Uh, so there'll be, other people will be able to use it when they're done with the series, but hopefully people. But that's costing a lot of money and it's taking up a lot of time.
She sent us in Texas. Well, they filmed, the, the, series two, they filmed in Utah. And they, it, um, if you've seen any of the, the, the behind the scenes stuff, they've all got, I mean, you think they're in New England, they're not, Utah. Because they've all got these great big parkas on. And apparently, when they did the, the sermon on the mount, they were freezing. Because the temperature, it, it got, it dropped way, way down into the thirties. And I guess they had frost at night a couple of times. Um, and the one particular scene of the wind that looks like it's fierce. And I'm thinking, oh, it must have had a wind chill of like the twenty, um, that they, when they're, they're, they're doing that. So Texas would probably be a more temperate climate.
He actually showed pictures of the whole set.
Oh, okay. Was that on the last livestream? Because I didn't see that. I'll have to go back. I, I, it was, it was an hour and a half and I didn't have that much time, so I kind of. Has, has anybody gotten tickets for the Christmas special? You go, I'll go in the valley.
Put together these little sections that bring you to the next area. It's all subtly, the writers put it in there.
No, I think you're going to Bethlehem instead of Bethlehem. When we, when we were doing our streaming and we were here in the chapel, the, the reading came up from the book of Samuel and it, and the, the lecturer said, and so God, God sent Samuel to Bethlehem. And I looked at Jonathan, I'm. Well, and see, the problem is, is that once we look at each other and we start laughing, it's all over. He looked at me and I started laughing, he, it just. Whatever, right before whatever. So, of course, now whenever I think of Bethlehem, I think of Bethlehem. I didn't know if it was. And, and that was quite a ride from Galilee to Bethlehem. And of course, in true Irish fashion, once you make a mistake, it can never be forgotten. It, it, it follows you to your death. As only, as only we Irish can. All right, so, um, next week is, um, is, is, is.
Right before Thanksgiving.
Right before Thanksgiving, so I, we're, I don't remember which, which episode it is, but it, um, it may be, eh, either way, we're going to have a feast in anticipation of Thanksgiving.
Oh, so we're going to have it Tuesday.
We will have a Tuesday, yes, the Tuesday after that that I can't because I had already made a commitment with a work month. So, um, and then we had talked about stopping then, but we actually pushed it for two more weeks into, uh, December. So we're going to do the seventh and the fourteenth into December. So we'll do six of the eight. Right, and then we'll have, we can talk about the, uh, the Christmas special at one point.
December seventh.
All right? Excellent.